Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is everybody rocking well? All right. I'll go ahead and call the meeting of City Council for February 26, 2024 to order until 1:00 p.m. If you'll go ahead and join me in the 20th.
We're going to be doing this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, members of the public. And Ms. Trimble, I'll go ahead and note that Counselor Savage and Counselor Jordan are not present unless...
Jordan's online.
Jordan's online, she did, okay, I'm sorry I missed that. Great, so never mind that, just Counselor Savage is absent this evening. Great, thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move on then to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes this evening, minutes from February 5, 2024, and minutes from February 12, 2024. Does anybody have any changes to either of those sets of minutes? Not seeing any in the room, any online? Nope. Okay. Great, then those minutes will be accepted as written, thank you very much. Great, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment on non-agenda items. The mayor and city council, welcome folks to come and address city council. I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. I do have a little handy note card up here, I'll try to help you maintain time. Please say your name and then spell your last name. If you would, identify your ward or where you live, just so folks know where you may be in the community, or if you live outside of the city, of course, that's fine too. And if you represent an organization, we would just love to know that as well. Come on up.
My name is Light.
Oh. We're on, that should be good now.
My name is Suzanne LaGrange, last name, it's good, two words like that. And I don't live in the city, but I do live in the county. But we're here tonight to address the potential movement of mail processing from Missoula to Spokane. I am a recently retired from the postal service after 25 years here in Missoula. I worked as a clerk in mail processing for 16 years, and my last nine years I was a window clerk here in town. The postal service released a press release dated January 10, 2024, stating their intention to review moving outgoing mail processing from Missoula to Spokane, Washington. In the press release, the postal service uses words and phrases like transformative plans, bolstering the organization's commitment to improve efficiency, customer service, and employee workplace experience. I don't consider myself an idiot, and I feel confident none of you are such, but knowing what I know about mail processing, moving what the postal service terms in their press release, a significant percentage of this mail collected in Missoula, there is no way that move will improve service or save money. Furthermore, the postal service asserts this modernization evaluation will not result in this facility's closure or career employee layoffs. Well, the evaluation might not create layoffs, but if the postal service moves forward with this plan, I have no doubt jobs will be lost. They can't move more than half the work to Spokane and continue to employ the same number of career employees in Missoula. The Missoula Postal Service employs approximately 200 people, well over half of them are career employees. Not all of them work in mail processing, but all are dependent on mail processing for their jobs. These are solid, middle-class jobs. There are a significant number of veterans employed here. These are jobs that enable people to make a house payment, a vehicle payment, and potentially send their kids to college. I'm asking the council to support our efforts to stop this consolidation, hopefully with letters to our congressional representatives and Postmaster General Louis DeJoy. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. LaGrange. Anybody else wish to make a public comment tonight? Come on up.
Hi. You're just a little bit here. Mine's gonna be similar to Suzanne, I work for the post office as well. Mine's a little bit more scripted. My name is Sean Harding, S-H-A-W-N-H-A-R-D-I-N-G. I live at 4224 Expressway, right off of Reserve. Are you ready to begin?
You bet.
I want to make sure my three minutes started, okay? Stay on point, I don't want to waste your time. Mayor Davis, esteemed members of the city council, and my fellow Missoula citizens. My name is Sean Harding. I'm the communications specialist with American Postal Workers Local 113, and I'm a letter operator at the United States Postal Service's Missoula Processing Plant on Kent Avenue. I stand before you today to bring attention to an issue that is taking place under the radar, that will have a serious impact on Missoula businesses and citizens. U.S. Postmaster General Louis DeJoy and the USPS Board of Governors are currently executing a plan entitled Delivering for America. Ostensibly, its intention is to improve U.S. mail delivery standards through a 10-year plan that aims to consolidate receiving, processing, and delivery locations. Its execution across our nation, however, belies that intention. Processing plants are closing. U.S. citizens are losing their jobs. Mail deliveries are being further delayed. Locally, their plan is to move our mail processing from our processing plant here on Kent Avenue in Missoula to Spokane, Washington. It's over 200 miles, three and a half hours, on a good day, and two mountain passes away. How this will improve mail delivery service standards, one can only imagine, especially during our harsh winter months from October to March, when the passes close an average of 14 times, which can last anywhere from a few hours to a few days. If USPS management's Delivering for America plan is executed, how much longer will it take for our businesses and citizens to receive crucial deliveries via U.S. mail? How much longer for social security checks? How much longer for Medicare, Medicaid benefits? How much longer for critical medications for veterans? How much longer for legal and government notices? How much longer for bills and paychecks? Here, I have the signatures of nearly 500 Missoulians, collected over only two days of local events so far, as well as letters from our senators, John Tester and Steve Daines, Rind, the U.S. Postmaster General DeJoy, and the USPS Board of Governors, denouncing their plans to move local mail processing from Missoula to Spokane, Washington, that will negatively impact the businesses and citizens of Missoula and Montana. We hope, Mayor Davis, and esteemed members of the city council, that you will join our federal representatives and our fellow citizens in a publicized denunciation of this plan and take actions to prevent its implementation, so you may help guarantee our current mail delivery standards and protect the businesses and jobs of Missoulians and Montanans. USPS management announced today that a public town hall meeting to discuss their intentions to move our mail processing to Spokane, Washington, will be held Friday, the 15th of March, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at the Doubletree at 100 Madison Street, Missoula, Montana. We encourage Mayor Davis, our council members, and Missoula businesses, owners, and citizens to attend this meeting to let USPS management know that their plans to move our mail processing to Spokane, Washington, and further delay critical mail deliveries is unacceptable. Thank you all for your time today. Our team will remain afterwards to answer any questions you have and to provide our contact information for further correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harding. And if you wish to leave the letters, you can do so with the officer, and he'll make sure that city council and the mayor receives those.
Wonderful, thank you.
Absolutely, you bet. Come on up.
Hey, I'm Robert Hopp. These two killed it, so there's not much I have to say. I work at 1100 West Kent at the post office as well. I've lived in the Rattlesnake neighborhood after I got out of the Marine Corps, but I currently live out of town in Florence, but I've worked here for, worked at the post office roughly six years. I'm a disabled veteran, and currently I'm the president of the American Postal Workers Local 113 Union. In my short time at the post office, I've seen our mail service further and further degraded, especially under Postmaster Louis DeJoy. This is another step, I believe, towards privatizing the post office. We're an essential service. When COVID happened, we didn't close, we stayed open. All the other government agencies shut down, and we stayed open to keep delivering the mail, and now they're trying to get rid of us. Their math doesn't add up, like Suzanne said. They want to get rid of half of our mail processing, outgoing mail, but they say we're not going to lose any career jobs. It doesn't add up at all, and I believe it's lies. And they keep hammering that we won't lose any career jobs. At any time, we have approximately 10 to 20 postal support employees, which are our newest, most vulnerable employees, and these are also good, middle-class jobs for Missoula. It's how you work your way into becoming a career employee, and they won't address what's going to happen to them. A lot of them are veterans, or disabled veterans as well, and they're at risk. We get letters saying they appreciate us as veterans, but it doesn't mean much coming from Louis DeJoy. So, in addition to what Sean outlined for you, I'd like to point out that we also have the support of David Erickson at the Missoulian and Jacob Oems at NBC Montana through the coverage of our fight to save local mail processing and Missoulian's jobs, as well as that of Mark Lash, the CEO of the Missoulian Chamber of Commerce. Recently, he met with U.S. Representative Ryan Zinke and notified the Chamber businesses to take action, so they don't lose the mail services they depend on to serve their customers. And again, I'd like to remind everyone to please attend the town hall meeting on Friday, March 15, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at the Doubletree by Hilton, Missoula Edgewater, 100 Madison Street, Missoula, Montana, 59802, to let USPS management know that their plans to move our mail processing to Spokane and get rid of quality Missoula jobs, further delay critical mail service and delivery is unacceptable. Thank you all very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hopp. Are there, come on up.
Hi there, my name is Doug Nellermoe, N-E-L-L-E-R-M-O-E. I've worked for the postal service in Missoula here my whole career since 1996. I have seen many changes, many plans that were going to make it a better organization. Unfortunately, most of them have made it a worse organization. This is the latest attempt, it appears, to downgrade this entity that's been around for 250 years plus. One of the things that I'd like to bring up is not only will it affect Missoula's mail processing, it'll affect about 500,000 people in western Montana as we process all the mail, basically west of the Continental Divide. So, anybody who cherishes a timely mail service that works, because I know most people are not very happy with the service because of the many things that they've done to make it better, and it's made it worse, this is just one more step. We have fought this fight before. Back in 2011, it was almost exactly the same scenario. We had the city council, we had the mayor's office, state representatives, county representatives, we had business leaders, all on our side. It was a huge win for us. At the town hall meeting we had that year, over 800 people came in, overflowed the meeting room. That's what we need to have, is as many people as possible show up and let them know that this is not acceptable to us. It'll, in essence, make us a second-class area, you know? But anyway, also, as Sean said, the weather is something that they obviously never plan into when they come up with these brilliant transportation plans. So, we just hope that you folks on the city council, members of Missoula, and the mayor's office will join in our fight. We will need your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Nellermoe, if I got that right. All right. Mr. Moore, come on up.
My name is Bob Moore, M-O-O-R-E. I had a couple of things in mind, but I would like to add my comments to the postal service working. I was a CPA in Washington, DC, when the post office first became a, in effect, a profit-making organization. Then, I learned everything about the post office, didn't like anything that I learned. So, I don't know the, exactly what the problem is here, why they're doing it, but I do know that they should have a reward just for being able to work in the post office conditions, if they're anything like they were in, I think it was 1972. So, my two cents work is for the local post office. The other thing I want to say is I've attended a committee meeting last, the 12th. Mr. Carolino, I take my hat off to him. He attempted to, I guess I'd say, make some sense, common sense, out of the MRA. One of the commissioners said, well, one thinks, what would you do? He said, well, I would not have approved the welfare, he didn't use welfare check, that's me, welfare check to the, to the bank. Big bank here in town. Didn't think the taxpayers should be paying for that project. And I've said that on many, many, many occasions, and he was trying to do it. He was attacked, that's my description, by a couple of people here, to, and they ended up tabling the effort he was trying. How you can, how you can, how you can take citizens' hard-earned money here and give it to something like the bank? Why do you do it? I've got here the minutes of December 1, which I would love for everybody to, in the city, to get those minutes and read them, and see what you think about what the MRA does.
Mr. Moore, you're welcome to give those to the officer in the back, and he'll make sure that he disseminates those, if you wish the council and the mayor to see those. Oh, okay, well, you can keep them. Gotcha, thank you. We'll take a look at those, thank you very much, thanks for your comments. Anybody else? I wasn't there. Anybody else wish to make public comment this evening? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kevin Hodd, I live in Ward 1, and I just want to, as a postal patron, support what these postal employees and former workers have said. And as someone who grew up here in Missoula, for decades, the mail was never missed. The mail was delivered every day, and even if there was some problem that happened, the letter carrier got there. It's kind of, still kind of like a rural route out where I live, and they got there, they made sure we got our mail. Very rare for that not to happen. That's no longer the case. Quite often, I get my mail three days a week. Things pile up, and this is a problem. And it's not the fault of our hard-working postal employees, but they have less and less to work with and worse and worse conditions, and if this sorting process moves out of Missoula, what's that going to do to people who are getting their mail only three or four times a week? It's not, they're not going to get it any more frequently, I can tell you that. This is really a serious thing, and I would like to see the council actually pass a resolution or on a motion of some sort before that 15th meeting, pass a motion declaring dissents of the city council on this. This is absolutely against the interests of everyone in this city and against all the businesses and the operation of government for this to happen. For a city of 77, 78,000 people, I guess we are, this is not okay. The Constitution of the United States, Article 1, Section 8, before the Bill of Rights was even adopted, one of the first things they said, right up front in the Constitution, one of the first things they mentioned is the post office. They mentioned that Congress has the ability to establish post roads and post offices. And we need to start defending that, so I hope you'll consider doing that. I think the official position of this council would carry a lot of weight, so please do so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anybody else wish to make public comment this evening?
This thing's not big enough.
True.
Jeffrey Oswald, I live over on Mount Avenue, by the Johnson Center, four blocks away from Front Door. I want to agree with everything that's been said about this postal thing. I really think our city council needs to make a stand, make a resolution, say, no, you're not taking this away from us, we are against it unequivocally, and, yeah, so do that, enough's been said about that. I'm kind of worn out today. I met somebody down at, around the Johnson Center a couple days ago, brought him home, gave him dinner, and next day, yesterday, I went down when food moms was serving, and I talked to him again, and spent several hours down in the Johnson Center and saw reality, and I suggest that any one of you that haven't spent some time down there, I mean, I'm not talking 15 minutes, hang out an hour or two and get to feel the place. The people there are heavy from the difficulty of living day to day with that as the only place they can be. They're heavy with it. They explain how they have to go out and go to this place and come back, because they don't want their stuff stolen. There's not adequate locker space for all the people there, stuff's lined up along the walls, and if anybody walks away from their stuff for a minute or two, somebody will come and start inspecting it and looking for things that they want. That's every day, all day, it's like that at night, and these folks are stressed from that, and we're only going to see aberrant behavior from stressed-out people, especially if a lot of them have mental illnesses, which they do. There's a lot of people who are in really bad shape down there, because just staying there is a tremendous burden on their emotional and mental well-being, just being there. But it's, you know, if they go out and sleep on the street, cold, it's not that cold, but what's really cold is the reception that they will get from a police officer if they're found sleeping in a place they're not supposed to. And I really hope that, you know, there's been times when I've got up here and been pretty upset about the way that the city is responding to homeless people, because they're people first. They have a mother and father, just like anyone here, and at some point, maybe they made some bad mistakes in life, and mistakes that you cannot come back from unless you have support from people who have wealth and property. And I told people on the council the first time I spoke here, I was on the streets for eight years in Eugene, and I was able to get off because I had a friend who gave me a room in the house, and I'm a lot more competent than a lot of folks that are on the street here. I'm high IQ, highly educated, and it was hard for me. It's going to be pretty much impossible for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there others that wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda this evening? Sir, come on up.
Robert Dunlop, 2316 West Kent. I'm here to tell you, I've been in the Johnson Center several times. The city should be proud of itself. That center is clean, they have access to Wi-Fi, and they have food. That's pretty good.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Dunlop. Are there others in the room this evening? Okay. Shifting to public comment on items not on the agenda for folks online, is there anybody online that wishes to make public comment? Not seeing anybody. Okay. Thank you, everybody, that'll conclude item number three, which is public comment on items not on the agenda. We'll go ahead and move on to agenda item number four, which is announcing committee meetings, committee membership appointments, and changes to committee agendas. And so, Ms. Trimble, will you go ahead and read the committee schedule for February 28, 2024?
Share my screen. This is the committee schedule for Wednesday, February 28. We have a long day, starting at 9:00 a.m., we're going to begin with Committee of the Whole and have four items. One is an informational item called Why We Plan. Next up, we have the 2024 Local Government Review and Study Commission. Following that, we have the approval of two advisory board appointments for the Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Board, and we also have some new presiding officer formats for council agendas. Following at 10:55, we'll have the Public Safety, Health, and Operations Committee with the purchase of one towable screening plant, and they will be introducing the Fire Department by the resolution. There'll be a lunch break, and beginning back at 1:05, the Budget and Finance Committee will meet to discuss a microfiche scanning agreement for fiscal year 2024 for the Community Planning, Development, and Innovation Department. Next up, at 1:35, is Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee, discussing two items related to the Scott Street projects. The first is Scott Street Workforce Housing Project Agreements, and also a resolution of intention to bond for the Scott Street Revare Project. Continuing at 2:45, the Climate Conservation and Parks Committee will meet to discuss 2024 Transportation Alternatives, Pavement Preservation, and Grant Arrangements, and a referral for the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails, also known as Postmaster Planning Updates. And finally, we'll finish the day at 3:45 with Public Works and Mobility, and they have five items on their agenda. One is a bid award to prospect construction for the Monroe-Jackson Street Water Main Replacement Project. One is a bid award to RLC Enterprises for the Edith Street Water Main Replacement. And next is RAS Valve Procurement for the Wastewater Treatment Plant. There's an information-only presentation about sidewalk construction and pavement. And finally, the Stevens Orange MDT Construction and Maintenance Agreement.
Great, thank you, Ms. Trimble, that is quite the list of items for Wednesday's committee agenda. Thank you very much, city council members, for your commitment to the city and all of the items that are moving through that day, appreciate that. Great, we'll move on then to item number five, which is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. We'll invite community comment on these items before we vote, so Ms. Trimble, will you go ahead and read items on the consent agenda, please?
Well, beginning with accounts payable, we will be ratifying accounts payable or claims for checks dated February 20, 2024, in the amount of $2,106,709.89. And also approving accounts payable for checks dated February 27, 2024, in the amount of $1,232,130.90. There's a motion to ratify the agreement with Community Solutions executed by the mayor execu- accepting a $190,075 grant in funds for over two years to fully fund a new Built-for-Zero Specialist Position in the House's programs. There's a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for construction manager at Risk Services for the Caris River Access Project. We have a motion to set a public hearing on April 1st, 2024, and preliminarily adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 2361 and 2359 West Kent Avenue and legally described lots four through seven and the east fifteen feet of Lot Eight of Carline Edition located at Section 29 Township 13 North Range 19 West, PMM from RT 5.4 Residential, which is two-unit townhome, to RM 1-35 Residential or Multidwelling. And to refer this motion to the Land Use Planning Committee for presentation and discussion on March 27th, 2024, this constitutes a first reading and preliminary adoption. And last item on the Consent Agenda is to preliminarily adopt changes to Title V regarding the short-term rental registrations and set a public hearing for March 11th, 2024.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Trimble. Now, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment on items on the Consent Agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to make public comment on the Consent Agenda tonight? Not seeing any. How about any online? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Great. Then we'll go ahead and we will take a vote on the Consent Agenda. And Ms. Trimble, will you go ahead and do a roll call vote, please?
I will. Voting on the Consent Agenda, starting with Anderson.
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vasika?
Yes.
That's eleven in favor, none opposed.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Trimble. All right. Moving on to agenda item number six, comments from city staff, city agencies, community forums, neighborhood councils, boards, commissions, or authorities. We have no items under that, number six tonight, nor any special presentations or proclamations, nor any final considerations. So that brings us to agenda item number nine, which is public hearings. Our public hearing this evening is an ordinance amending Title V, Section 5.08.130 regarding business licenses and prior criminal history. We don't have any staff members here to present on this, but we do have Councilor Carlino who introduced this. Counselor?
Yeah, I'm happy to just re-present this item, and then we'll take comments from the public today. And could I get clarification from Ms. Trimble if we're able to vote on this today or if we're holding it over?
You are able to vote on it today if you're ready.
Okay, great. So...
Point of order. Hold on one second.
Sorry. Ms. Trimble, I thought that we had to have twelve days before ordinance changes.
This is the second reading. The first reading was when the public hearing was set.
My apologies. I didn't realize this was the second reading. Thanks so much. Good thing someone's keeping us in good shape back there.
Yeah, no worries. I was just checking.
Great. Thank you for providing that clarification. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So yeah, this, this ordinance change is to end automatic denial of business licenses based on applicant's prior criminal history and to declare city policy to issue business licenses to individuals with a prior criminal history unless there is a risk to the public health, safety, and welfare determined by, occurring by the appeal board. So currently, a city policy is to automatically deny business licenses for applicants who have felony, felonies on their criminal records for certain job types and/or for people that have misdemeanor, theft, or fraud, et cetera, for jobs that are pertaining to, I guess I'll just list them here. This is only for businesses pertaining to video inventorying services operating within buildings, any for-profit business conducting sales or solicitation at individual residences, tree trimming and spraying, itinerant vendors, transient merchants, boiler room operations, chimney sweepers, home maintenance and repair businesses. And currently, the city is automatically denying business licenses for those types of businesses if the applicant has a past felony or misdemeanor charge of theft or fraud or things like that. And then currently, the applicant can go appeal that to the appeal board, and they can try to make their case why they're, why they should be able to operate this business. And rather than automatically denying people, we want to, this ordinance change is going to make it to where we declare city policy to grant business licenses unless, but we will still have background checks for these people, for these types of businesses. However, currently, it's put on to the applicant to say why they should be granted a business license, and now we're trying to change it to where it's on the city to have to clarify why we would deny a business license rather than what we're currently doing, which is automatic denial. And the reason that I think we should make this change is that when people are coming out of prison or coming out of jail and trying to get good jobs and get access to housing or start their own business, I believe we need, it's crucial that we provide those opportunities in our community and not put up more and more barriers for people to have good access to housing or jobs or to run their own business. Because when people have those barriers in place, it makes it harder, it makes it more likely that they could re-offend, or it makes it harder for them to, you know, get a good job and provide for their family, et cetera. So yeah, we're happy to take questions and then go on to public comment.
Thank you, Councilor Carlino. Okay, so we'll open it up to questions from council. And Councilor Nugent, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Thank you, Councilman Carlino. I was hoping that City Attorney Sudbury could explain, hopefully in basic terms, what the difference between how we do this now and how we will do this if this is adopted, or...
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sudbury.
Yeah, sure. Presently, folks who get flagged for criminal history of the types of businesses that Mr. Carlino indicated are automatically denied. And they can apply to have that denial heard at a, essentially an appeal board that's set out in their ordinance. So under the change, and there's no real guidance for that. So this ordinance decision instead of an automatic denial goes to the appeal board for a finding. So they have to determine whether there's a specific threat, essentially, to the public health and safety. And if they do, then they'll issue written findings. There's criteria that the ordinance contains, and it kind of guides that decision. If they find a specific threat, they can deny it. And if they don't, then a license would be issued.
Yep, you bet. Go ahead, Councilor Nugent.
Yeah, thank you. So would my explanation that instead of automatically denying and letting the applicant file an appeal, the appeal kind of happens automatically now, almost? Because the same process, because the appeal would have been...
Yeah, I mean... Yeah, effectively, but I would, it's not exactly because it's not an appeal. It's just the decision is given to the appeal board straight away. So it's not an appeal. It's just they need to make, someone needs to make a decision, consider the case, weigh the evidence. They can offer a hearing to the individuals applying to provide information or background. Frequently, in, in current practice, in talking to the city employees who deal with this historically, no one can actually remember maybe but one of these appeals that haven't been upheld. So effectively, what we've been doing in practice is letting people make their case. Usually, there's, you know, good explanation, either the crime happened, you know, many decades before, or the person was, had a substance abuse issue that they have since, you know, sought treatment for. And so this kind of memorializes what is our existing practice, but, you know, puts the onus on the city to make the case why it shouldn't be granted rather than putting it on, on the person, say why it should. So it's not an appeal exactly. It's just sort of a hearing.
Could I add to that?
Real quick. So, so I should have used appeal, but essentially, for the, if the public has questions, there will still be a body looking at it, one way or the other. It just kind of changes the order of how that happens.
Correct.
Certainly. And, and the ordinance outlines, you know, the threat, the criteria that they're supposed to weigh when, in making that decision. But yeah, somebody will be looking at the, you know, the circumstances surrounding the conviction and, you know, any other relevant history of the individual, also weighing the nature of the business that they're engaged in, and does the criminal history have a nexus to the business that they're engaged in such that it might put somebody at risk or not, you know?
Yeah, and just to add to that, the other thing I forgot to mention is that right now, we're looking at any felony, and then in this, it's, it's more narrowed down as well to felony offenses against a person listed in Chapter Five, or an offense related to, a felony offense related to predatory conduct, sexual assault, or theft, fraud, and dishonesty, or deceptive practices. And currently, it's every felony is automatically denied. So those are, so now it's narrowed down, too, on the amount of people that will have to go to the appeal board. Is that their factor as well?
Thank you for that clarification. There's another question online from Councilor Jordan.
Thank you. Mr. Sudbury, I'm wondering if you can just really quickly tell us if this ordinance change is going to make Missoula more dangerous and less safe for people to live in and shop in? Or is this ordinance change going to continue to maintain the public safety that we all hold dear?
I don't think I can speak to that. I don't have any data or information that would be relevant. I, I would say, I guess, that I don't think this on the ground in processing business licensing and talking to our staff is going to have a dramatic change. But it's certainly possible that there are appeals that we did not hear because people didn't apply for businesses that didn't, because they didn't think they were going to be on a passive criminal background check. But I don't have any information on, on the results this will have on criminal activity in the town.
Thank you. Councilor Basara?
Yeah, my question's also for Ryan. Could you, do you know how often the appeal process is needed, and how long does it take?
I do not. In my experience, it's relatively quick. I would estimate thirty days, but I don't have any information to back that up. And I, I don't know how often it's needed. I would have to rely on the business licensing staff to provide that information, which I can provide following the meeting if you'd like.
Okay. Mr. Carlino, do you know, as part of your research for bringing this forward, how often this is needed, or what the experience is for people seeking the appeal process?
Councilwoman Vasika, I think, would probably be the best person to go to on that. I know she provided some information on that question earlier, too. If I could just go to...
Yeah, so I sit on the Business License Appeal Board, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it was roughly eight last year, and only one the year before. We currently have had, one is being scheduled right now for this year, and we've already had one this year. From my understanding is that as soon as an applicant requests an appeal, then we go to all the members of the board to try to find a time that works for all of us, and the meeting is probably about thirty minutes virtually.
Thank you, Councilor Vasika. That's helpful. Are there any other council questions? Not seeing any. Not seeing any in the room. Ms. Basara, I think your hand is still up. Any other questions? No, it's down. All right. Not seeing any more online. All right. Great. Then we will go ahead and move on to public comment on items on this agenda. We'll start with folks in the room. Is there anybody who wishes to make public comment this evening?
Hello again. My name's Kevin Hunt. I live in Ward One, and I've spoken a lot on this, and I'll try to get to the points I haven't been able to make yet. I'm glad to see that there's a lot of due process being put into this, but there's still some things that haven't been addressed. This ordinance still doesn't address situations that are controlled by two Montana statutes that have been brought to the council's attention a number of times. It doesn't address people who've had a pardon. You say there's not going to be any appeals, but if something meets, catches the eye of whoever's taking these applications, it still will go to an appeals board, but it's not an appeal, but it goes to an appeals board. And the license isn't initially being denied, it's just not being issued. I, I just don't, I think this is, I just think these are euphemisms for basically doing the same thing. The only real difference is that nobody has to file a piece of paper for it to go, another piece of paper for it to go to the appeals board, and the only, the burden is on the city. But let's look at the first initial determination. Who's going to make that? I still don't know who's going to make that. Is that a clerk? Who's making that determination? And based on what criteria? Presumably a layperson. You have a, as far as I can tell, you haven't defined what a predatory crime is. How, who's going to make that judgment call? You can't have, you can't have that judgment changing every time. You need to define what you mean when you say that. And you need to do that for every one of these. The other concern I have is, is I still don't know how you're going to deal with, let's say, something that is, what about out-of-state convictions? I mean, are you looking at those? If you are, then how are you going to judge whether they triggered this, this ordinance or not? You need to set, set that forth. Are you going to try to see if, are you going to require that all the elements match? Are you just going to look at basically what the kind of crime it was? I mean, this still needs more work, and that's, it just creates too many ambiguities. And, you know, my final, of course, concern is that Article Two, Section Twenty-Eight is, is unequivocal in what it says. So, you know, I know, I realize that there's apparently unanimous desire to go forward with this, but if you're going to go forward with this, I would ask that you at least try to define the terms in this thing and decide how a clerk is going to exercise discretion to know whether to send it off to the appeals committee instead of denying it. I still believe, and, let's see here, and if people have fully discharged their, their sentences, I believe Article Two, Section Twenty-Eight, whether we like it or not, says that they shouldn't be treated differently. But I'm mostly concerned just about all this vague language. It's, it's much better than it used to be, and I'm all for the due process, but I think it needs a little more work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Is there anybody else in the room that wishes to make public comment on, on this agenda item? Come on up.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm David Aronofsky. I live in Ward One in Lincolnwood. I'm a retired University of Montana General Counsel and Law Professor, and I've contacted you in writing a few times on this issue. This is a vastly improved version of what I've reviewed before, and I want to commend everyone who participated in making this better. I'll try not to repeat, however, the, the problems that Kevin has identified. And by way of quick background, when I was General Counsel at the university, I brought the University of Montana into the world of mandatory background checks for every employee. We were among the very first universities in the country to require them. And we did a lot of due diligence on both Montana law and what was happening nationally. So this is something I can speak to. And one of the things I learned right away was that Montana has a very unique constitutional rights approach to the problem of people with prior criminal histories. Once someone has fully served their service, their sentence, and is no longer under state conviction parenthetically, and also, and/or also, once someone gets a gubernatorial pardon, they cannot be discriminated against in any way, shape, or form. And this is how the Montana Constitution was written. I probably shouldn't have to remind everybody in this room sitting here that you all took an oath of, of office to uphold the Montana Constitution. Ms. Jones took it again when she became a Montana lawyer long before joining the council. And I don't see any way that the council can legally apply discretion on what to do with someone who has fully served a sentence or has had a gubernatorial pardon. I don't think you can... I don't think you can condition a license for that person because the statute on its face and the constitutional language made clear, the crime never happened. If the crime never happened, then you don't have the authority to limit or restrict the license. I would argue with Mr. Sudbury on that point, and I have. I think he's just flat out wrong. I'm not asking you to take my version of what the Constitution means, but because this is such a sensitive individual rights issue, I think at a minimum, if you're not going to adopt the amendment that I proposed early on, which is exclude people who've been pardoned or whose rights have been fully restored from this whole appeal process, then it's fine. You don't have a problem because they're not subject to the denial and you're fully complying with the Constitution. I'm well aware that Mr. Sudbury believes that somehow the legislature has given the city the right to license with this kind of restriction, but it does not address the constitutional issues which eliminates that right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aronofsky. Are there other members of the public that wish to make a comment on this agenda item this evening? Okay, not seeing any in the room. I'll go ahead and look online for members of the public and just for the record, Counselor Jordan, I see your hand up when we get to that point in the flow here. All right, not seeing any members of the public online wishing to comment. So, that brings us to the next item or part of the process here, which is to make a motion. So, Mr. Carlino, would you like to make a motion please?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to make the recommended motion to adopt an ordinance amending Title 5 in the Missoula Municipal Code to amend Section 5.08.130 to end automatic denial of business licenses based on an applicant's prior criminal history and declare city policy to issue business licenses to individuals with a prior criminal history unless there is a risk to public health, safety, and welfare determined by a hearing.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Carlino. Now we shift again to public comment on that particular motion. Is there any public comment on the motion itself? Okay, not seeing any in the room, not seeing any online. Then go ahead and shift to council comments. Counselor Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I missed the committee day when this was brought forward, so I appreciate just a minute to speak to it. I am fully in favor of this. I think anytime we can reduce the burden on people who have served their time, we need to do that because as we all heard from Benny Lekao, who is now Ali Lekao, when he came in and talked about what it's like to re-enter after serving time, we create so many barriers for our returning citizens that they are unable to find their feet and become a contributing member of society. And so anyway, we can lessen regulation that has to do with people who have served their time. I'm fully in support of. I also appreciate that this is in line with some of the red, you know, cut the red tape agenda that our governor has. I'm not always on board with cutting the red tape, but I think that this is a good example of how we can cut the red tape locally and allow people who have served their time and their debt to society to re-enter a little more easily and offer unique business opportunities in our city. And I'm fully in support of this and I'm really excited that we have a chance to vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan. Are there other council comments? Counselor Becerra?
Yeah, thanks. I agree with what my colleague, my boardmate Kristen said, and I agree with what Mr. Carlino said earlier, so I'm not going to repeat that. I am going to reiterate some of my arguments that I did make the last time. And I really just want to emphasize the burden that's faced by individuals that are seeking to pursue their right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And obtaining a business license involves navigating numerous bureaucratic hoops, so it can be incredibly difficult, especially for many blue collar workers, and those are the majority of the ones that I see on the appeals board. They just want to start their own business and we should strive to ease this process for consumers of the service that the city, that the City of Missoula requires them to have, which is the business license. And as I previously mentioned, our appeals board has consistently granted 100% of the appeals that were brought before us when I was on, when I'm on the board. I can't really speak to one before I was on the board because I don't have those numbers in front of me. This ordinance change will not only save staff and board members time, but it will also alleviate the applicant's time and frustration when appealing cases that are most likely going to be granted anyways. And of course, this excludes any exceptional cases, which was highlighted by my colleague, Mr. Carlino. And another colleague mentioned earlier that we need to do our due diligence and be careful if we are putting the City of Missoula's seal of approval on their business license. And I do agree with that, but this ordinance change does not dismiss the due diligence of the staff and the city can certainly still deny up to their discretion. It's just saying that the policy is not to automatically deny it. So I really hope that my colleagues will be in support of this ordinance change. And just to, I guess, summarize this, I did have somebody reach out to me who watched a council meeting and a news report about the business license appeals and said that that news report was speaking directly to this person. And so these are real people. These are people who are really frustrated, that they just want to have the past behind them and we should, we should be happy that they want to prosper and that things that happened decades ago are not still haunting them. So I urge my colleagues to be in support of this.
Thank you, Counselor Becerra. Are there other comments from the council tonight? All right, not seeing any here in the room or online. Then we'll go ahead and move to a vote on this item. So Ms. Trimble, would you go ahead and take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, voting on the ordinance amending Title 5 relating to business licenses, beginning with Becerra.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
That's 11 in favor and none opposed.
Great, thank you, Ms. Trimble. Congratulations, Mr. Carlino. All right. Moving on then to agenda item number 10, which is committee reports. And located in the council agenda are the minutes from several committee meetings that occurred last week. The only agenda item we have under this agenda item is 10.7. B, which is awarding the construction contract to Three Rivers Land Works for West Pine Water Main Replacement Project. And Chris Fuchs, are you online?
Andy Schultz is here.
Hey, Andy, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here.
Yep.
Would you mind giving a, well, I mean, this has been in committee before, so I'll give the preference, but I'll just mention, is there anything, Mr. Schultz, that you'd like to present to council tonight that hasn't already been covered in the committee meeting?
I think I'd just reiterate that, you know, I think there's a little bit of confusion over the fact that we didn't award to the lowest bidder. We awarded to the next bidder because they had a, an apprenticeship program in place, which allows them to get a bidder's preference of 5% on their bid, which in turn, when you apply that 5%, they had the low bid.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schultz, for members of the public. The city council passed an ordinance sometime back, really encouraging adding to skilled labor in our community through an apprenticeship program. And so that's what Mr. Schultz was, was relaying there. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So yeah, since that last committee meeting, I've had a chance to speak with my colleagues, Councilwoman Becerra and Councilwoman Jones. And I had some concerns with the mechanics behind the apprenticeship program and it led to the moment we're arriving at right now. But I had a chance to speak with them and speak further about the apprenticeship program and it was passed in 2019. And based on the information that was provided by Councilwoman Jones, I do believe that this program serves a meaningful purpose and I think there's a good example of, you know, where this could be put into place for this particular project that would be of benefit to the community, you know, despite the fact that they weren't technically the low bidder on the project. So, long story short, I will be in support of the matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And real quick, just apologies to staff for delaying it to this point in time this evening, but I had a conversation with staff, Mr. Schultz as well, and just came to arrangement where I think going forward, it'd be good, and I spoke with Councilwoman Becerra on this as well, may do a referral to have some from Public Works, perhaps Engineering, come in and maybe go over the apprenticeship program a little bit more detail, may bring, bring us up to speed on, you know, how it's progressed since the time it's been adopted.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you, Counselor Campbell. And, you know, it gave us the opportunity to highlight it this evening, which, you know, many people might know, might not know, so it's a good opportunity. All right. Ms. Jones?
Thanks, Bob, first of all, for talking it through and using the process, and I appreciate that and I'm glad you support it. Since we are kind of highlighting it tonight, I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the bidder's apprentice, but I think we should have it in committee and have a more extensive discussion. We talk a lot about housing and before the pandemic, we talked a lot about housing then. And since the pandemic, I think one of the huge driving factors with housing costs is just sheer demand hitting Missoula. But prior to the pandemic, demand was one component, but we were also talking more about materials and labor also, just ever since 2008, we lost a lot of contractors and tradespeople in Missoula. Those businesses, many of them were not re-upped and culturally, demographically, all sorts of reasons why we don't have enough people in the trades. So that's what the bidder's preference is getting at, is trying to incentivize more folks getting into trades. So just broad strokes, this actually is about housing because we need more people in the trades to build more houses. So that's kind of the core of it. But let's talk more in committee because it's just, this is exciting stuff, so can I say? Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Jones. All right, so I believe we're at the point where we can ask for a motion on this, and so I'll look to Public Works Chair, Counselor Becerra.
Thank you. And just before that, I do want to thank Mr. Campbell for reaching out to staff and working with them to better understand what the process is and looking forward to bringing that to Public Works Committee for an overall view at how the bidding process works and the apprenticeship program works for Missoula. With that, I move that we approve an award to the bid for the West Pine Street Water Main Replacement Project to Three Rivers Land Works LLC at the cost not to exceed $752,223.68 and authorize the return of bid bonds. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Becerra. Folks have had an opportunity to make comments, but I'll just check around the horseshoe here or those online to see if anybody else wishes to make any comments, council comments this evening. Nope, all right, any online? Okay, not seeing any. Great. Ms. Trimble, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
All right, voting on the award of the construction contract, beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Did I skip Jones and Jordan? Sorry. Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Sorry, my computer's doing weird things and want to make sure everybody gets counted. Cheryl?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Becerra?
Yes.
And that's 11 in favor and none opposed.
Great, thank you, Ms. Trimble. All right, that item passes then. So that concludes committee reports. There are no items under new business, so that brings us to communications from the mayor. Just also wanted to extend my appreciation for the U.S. Postal Service employees and those that are retired to come in and share what's happening here locally and of course nationally in terms of larger federal policy that's happening with the U.S. Postal Service. And hopefully we'll be able to, you'll be able to utilize this public comment opportunity to drive some members of the public to the meeting, which is March 15th at 6:00 PM at the Doubletree. I wanted to just quickly thank the council members for attending the working group for the urban camping working group. And it is a council working group, which is not something that we do very often, and it's a great opportunity to have a conversation with members of the public as well. And so because we have a relatively small group in terms of what can be a workable size, we do have 11 members of the public ranging from a wide variety of different perspectives, contributing their thoughts. And so I just wanted to thank everybody for the time that you'll invest in that in the next several weeks. Really appreciate that. I've heard from several members of the public how much they appreciate your time and energy on that as well. I just wanted to mention, I had the opportunity today to participate with the Zero to Five Program, which is an effort statewide, but we have a chapter here locally that works to develop zero, well, childhood development and early childhood education opportunities for children zero to five years old. Many different aspects of it, one of which is even prenatal all the way up to third grade, knowing that that is the most important time in a child's life. And we've really done some amazing things locally here where we've helped establish ways to help fill the gap when we don't have a lot of state funding that enable early childhood education like other states in the nation do. One of the things that the city does as part of that, because early childhood education, of course, is one component and good quality childcare is a component of that. What happens when the child is getting care really matters. You know, whether they're engaged in learning or whether they're stuck in front of a screen really matters. And so the work to help support that really challenged industry has been getting more attention in the last several years and the city has been participating on a number of fronts. One of the things that we've been doing is in partnership with the county and a number of interested members as part of the Zero to Five Group to create the Missoula Child Care Advantage. So we have a pilot program at the Cold Spring School where there will be an opportunity for several different providers to operate out of a facility where there'll be shared administration. So not only will there be automated wait lists and ways that'll make it more efficient for parents, but also make it more efficient for providers. The great thing is, is that this will actually kick off with providers starting to do business in this facility in one week from now. So stay tuned, but this is something that's, we should all feel very proud about and I'm really proud that the City of Missoula has helped move this initiative along. Last thing I'll, I'll mention is, actually, there's two things. The last thing, well, quickly, I'll just say that at the committee meeting on this coming Wednesday, I'll have an opportunity to present a memo on some changes for how we run our meetings. The city council has adopted a new agenda schedule. And then there's some opportunity to provide some clarification around how as the presiding officer will manage the meetings. One of the things you may have heard be emphasized tonight is that if you as a member of the public wish to provide any members of the council a document or something that you wished the council to see, rather than approaching the diocese, what we'll ask you to do is hand those to the officer. It's a typical standard process that we used to have in place and throughout the pandemic and some other things, we just kind of lost that practice. And it is something that really helps in terms of public safety. We have officers in the room that are maintaining the safety of our guests as well as members of, so the members of the public as well as the council. And it's difficult, I would say, for, it makes it more difficult if they've got to try to see who's approaching council, and so this will help, will help them as well as help all of us, I would imagine. And there's a few other things that we'll walk through in terms of that memo, so stay tuned. That new council agenda will roll out next Monday night, March 4th. And then last thing I would say is that during one of our consent agenda items, we talked, it was a contract for Built for Zero, and this is something that I just wanted, I don't want to talk a whole lot more because I know people are probably ready to get out of here. But I did just want to mention that this is a grant that the city is moving forward on. It's a nationwide effort that puts data analysis around working with specific groups of folks that are currently living houseless in your community and trying to be very specific about the different initiatives that we can put forward as a community. But I did just want to mention that this is a grant that the city is moving forward on. It's a nationwide effort that puts data analysis around working with specific groups of folks that are currently living houseless in your community and trying to be very specific about the different initiatives that we can put forward as a community. Not city government alone, but city government will be part of that. And our first initiative is to focus on veterans, homeless veterans. And the idea behind Built for Zero is what we call functional zero, which means that when, if a person enters into homelessness, then somebody is exiting homelessness so that there's basically a functional zero. It recognizes the reality that we live in as a society and that we're never going to eliminate homelessness 100%. But we can create solutions and put tools in place that enable us to hopefully keep homelessness rare brief and one time only. And some more to come on this, but this is an opportunity for us as a community to really target homeless veterans. And then we will be able to take that same process that we develop and expand that to other folks that are living houseless as well. It's a national program and standard that's been shown to be quite effective. So I just wanted to mention that since it was only on the consent agenda and members of the public might be interested. Okay, I'll go ahead and shift then to committee, or excuse me, to council comments. And I will start with Counselor Basika.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was just going to pass, but then you sparked something in my mind that I wanted to share with folks. I had my child during COVID and there was a lot of, I guess, unknown things, especially with everyone on social distancing. You have a kid. I asked my brother, how do you, how do you play with a six-month-old? Like, what am I supposed to do with this thing? And there is a really interesting organization out there. I don't know much about the organization, but it's been really helpful. It's called Bright by Text, not dim, but bright by text. Just use your favorite search engine to search it. And they just send you some interesting tips and tricks on how to play with your kid that are age appropriate. Now that my kid is becoming a little human being and is easier to play with, but also gives a lot of tips on how to deal with like tantrums or how to cook with them. And for people who, I guess, don't really have a lot of friends or family with children and you're kind of lost there, I would highly recommend looking for this or searching it and, you know, just giving a little bit of, I guess, a push on how you can play with your kid because sometimes you don't really know what you're doing. So I just wanted to point that out. And then I did mention this, last year, I believe that we had a announcement at council for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. I just wanted to let folks know about that again. It's also a really good resource for free, age-appropriate books that are sent free, well, I guess paid for by Dolly Parton, so free to you to, to your mailbox so that no kid is left without a book. So highly recommend looking into that as well.
Thank you for sharing both of those. Appreciate that.
I'll pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually wasn't going to say anything, but just a shout out to postal workers that showed up tonight. I appreciate that. I've known some postal workers over the years on my time in military who retired, went to postal work. I know one in particular who was a major in my Army Reserve Unit and his full-time gig was a postal carrier up in, up in Kalispell for a number of years. Just so happens, my next door neighbor, I'll just give a first name, Neil, believes he works a rural route in town here. And, you know, I talked to him from time to time and, you know, just talking about the lack of resources, the lack of support from higher up and just, you know, creating the situation of, you know, burnout and trying to keep people, you know, employed there and want to remain there. And, you know, people leave, then it creates more burden for you all and just kind of this cascade effect. Just, you know, kind of scratched my head thinking somehow it seems like it's kind of by design to a degree. You know, at least that's the way I'm looking at it. But I appreciate you being here. I too am concerned with, you know, the prospect of just recent center being relocated out of state. I think it's problematic. I think it's bad for Missoula. I think it's bad for Western Montana. Logistically, I don't know how it makes sense in my mind that that would be an efficiency somehow to take something like this and move it three and a half hours down the road over two mountain passes. So I think it's something that definitely we as a body should consider looking at further. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Lots of things, but they'll all go quick. First of all, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library is fantastic. It is not free to run, paid for by Dolly Parton, though. It's a combination of two things in Missoula County, actually a grant from the Jean Forte Family Foundation. And the other half, which is about $35,000, is fundraised by the Missoula County United Way, who runs Imagination Library. So I will always take an opportunity to plug that. Speaking of the United Way, thank you for bringing up Missoula Childcare Advantage because I think that is such an exciting thing happening in Missoula. And we were just talking today about the pace that sometimes things happen, not as fast as we would like. This has been incredibly fast-paced because this organization came together, they got a state grant, identified a place, construction started in the fall, and this has all come together in basically less than 12 months. And so everything the mayor said is spot on. And I think it's the start of hopefully something really good for Missoula. And the premise of that grant was to have a revolutionary idea in childcare or something of that nature. So something that will change the industry, hopefully, or a model to create something new. So I really appreciate the city being a partner and I'm glad that you have, your support is, is strong for that. I want to echo the comments, thanking the postal workers for coming in. I really appreciate you all taking this effort to the public so that people understand what's going on. I have seen both the senators' letters and I have no doubt that there's plenty of support for what you are doing up here on this body. And we'll probably put our heads together and figure out how we can be of support. But I also really appreciate that you, as your union, are here fighting for what unions do, and that's protect workers. And I think there's a lot of that going on in this town right now. There's signs all over town for nurses as well. And I just think it's a good reminder, the power that people have when they, when they organize and work together to push back against things that I think are unjust for employees. So thank you all very much for taking the effort and coming down to kind of share this with us. Definitely does not fall on deaf ears. And finally, I do want to comment on more of a national issue quickly. The Alabama Supreme Court has really thrown a wrench into a lot of families' only way to, to have children. And that's IVF. And I don't want to go into all the details of that because this is city council and it's not an issue that we talk about. But I do want to take this moment to say that, you know, I'm lucky enough to be the father of two wonderful kids. They're about five years apart. We had our first child with no problems and we could not have a second child for several years. And we started down the path of IVF and then we got pregnant. And that's the way it happens for some people, but some people need to take that all the way through. And if we hadn't had that ability in a red state like Montana, I'm not sure what we would have done. Because part of the reason that we, we were able to get pregnant is you start going through these tests and there's, it's complicated. Anyway. I think that there's been this huge conversation around medical decisions for women and families. And so much of it has become just who can take the grandest position and people forget what is actually at the heart of that. And that is, that is private medical decisions, that is people trying to start families. And what happens when people take things that should be private matters and turn them into giant political statements is that there are all kinds of unintended consequences. And one of those is what's happening in Alabama right now, which is now all the families in Alabama who rely on IVF to start families, to have children, can't do it. Because politicians turned it into something that it never should have been. And now you see all kinds of people backtracking. But I think the lesson for a lot of people should be that words matter and that people should think through their actions before they actually take a stand. And I know that many on this council align with me perfectly on this, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to say aloud that for everybody in Montana and across this country who rely on IVF, that you have allies in elected offices and we will keep speaking loudly because it does make a difference. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Nugent. Appreciate that. And also thank you for your time on the Board of the United Way when a couple of these, you know, very important programs either were maintained and/or started there. So board service matters. Thank you.
Great comments on so many things tonight. Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to say thank you to the postal workers who came in. I really support you and your endeavor. I love my snail mail and I use it all the time. And Perry was my mail carrier for a long time and I miss him much. He was wonderful. But I think, for me, part of this picture too is there, a lot of people are online for communication, but a lot of people aren't. And the mail is a crucial lifeline and it can be age-based, it can be resource-based. There's all sorts of issues out there and getting timely mail is a very important lifeline to our modern world. And it's important that it stays a strong, viable service that's provided in Missoula. So thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Jones.
I too want to say thank you. The postal service has been one of my kids', important parts of my kids' lives. They connect with the person who brings mail to them. And I grew up in a place where we couldn't rely on our mail. We still can. And so I'm truly appreciative of everything you do and you got my support. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Basara.
I'm going to pass tonight. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Nelson. That brings us to folks online, starting with Counselor Jordan. Do you have any comments tonight?
Yeah, thank you. Just really quickly, like my colleagues, I fully support all the folks that came in to talk about the post office today and it moving. And I'd like to follow my colleague, Mike Nugent's statement up with, you know, an effort that we can come together and maybe put together a statement of some kind saying that Missoula is in support of keeping the post office here because we need you, we want you. And I appreciate everybody that came down to speak to this tonight. And I'll be there on March 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Counselor Farmer?
Yeah, thanks. I also wanted to say thank you to the postal workers who came down. My apologies for not being there in person. And I also wanted to just give a quick shout out to the YMCA. My 11-year-old was recently in their basketball program and I was just really impressed with the way that they ran it. It was just really positive all around, all the volunteer coaches and the referees would pause and tell the kids what they were doing wrong and how to do it better. And it was just a really overall positive, great experience. And I think it's an awesome program. And I'm really thankful that we have something like that in our community. And that's it.
Great. Thank you. President Cheryl, bring us home.
It's going to be quick. Yeah, thanks, everyone. I really appreciated everyone's comments tonight and agree with them. I just, I actually wanted to give a shout out to council because we had a really long, hard week last week. Many of us have full-time jobs, many of us have families. And it, it was a hard week. It was a long week. It required a lot of homework to go into some of these meetings. And I just really appreciate everyone's commitment to doing this job and doing it well and the thoughtful discussion we had on all the items. So I wanted to give a shout out to council.
Thank you, Counselor Cheryl. All right, that concludes city council comments and that concludes our agenda for this evening. So I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:24. Thanks for being here.